Ready? All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. So we have to come back in here for these sessions. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Adam?
Can we recess out of executive session right to the listening session or do we need to come back up on stage?
Collective bargaining. All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to consider collective bargaining agreements?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What is that? What is it for?
To talk about collective bargaining agreements. Negotiations.
Negotiations.
Yeah. Also.
All right. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Is that you? It was you? Okay. I didn't think I wrote it down right. Sorry about that. Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French. Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
So do we have to come back in here? ... and I am going to put us into recess so we can go to the listening session. Right, Adam? No roll call? Here we go.
No roll call.
Okay.
Sure. I don't care if just reminding you that you said you wanted to do that.
All right, I'd like to pull us out of recess and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With Board President's comments, I'd like to thank our community for the outpouring of support for our student Aspen who was injured crossing the street. I know that everyone has done what they can to support that family and we will continue to support their family in any way. There was a vigil on Sunday night that I know some people were able to attend and thank you to everyone. I know there's been calls for how might we continue to work with our township officials and we'll continue to work with law enforcement and township officials on making sure that we do all we can for all of our students. So with that, I will pass it over to Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. We had three wonderful graduation ceremonies. I'd like to thank the staffs that were involved in preparing those and thank the students and the families for being part of such a great event for Central, for West, and for East. They just did a fabulous job with that. We are in the last days of school, doesn't seem possible, but we are, and moving right along to the end this coming week, not coming this coming week, this week, for students to begin their summer vacation. So want to wish everyone a safe and restful summer opportunity. And I'd like to, I'd like to talk a little bit about my recommendation, if it's appropriate, for the IT positions. When we started to look at how we could actually start to support some of the changes we were trying to make, for example, adding the five gifted staff members, making sure that we were being as fiscally responsible as possible, I looked at a variety of things and a variety of pieces of data. And I requested, for example, the number of break-fix items for our IT department so I could just have an idea about the efficiency and effectiveness of that. And we did put in all new, this year, we did put in all new Chromebooks in our K-2 buildings because they were having difficulty with spinning and lots of not being able to connect. So we did put in, the board approved that, and we put those in. They were delivered to the K-2s and things have gone well with that. Our break-fix numbers for grades three, six, whenever I ask for this, before, I think this was January, number are about four per day. And that's for three, six, which are one-on-one also, Chromebooks. And then seventh and eighth grade, they're nine per day, again, one-on-one. And they actually, nine through 12 is 14 per day. And Chromebooks, if you look at the industry standard, Chromebooks are easier to take care of. If they're not fixable, you get rid of them and put a new one in place because they're relatively inexpensive. Laptops are a little bit more difficult to take care of, but again, the numbers basically warranted my recommendation to the Board of Education to make sure that, that we actually take our resources and use them wisely as we start to look at some deficit spending that Mr. Zink will talk about in his forecast. So that was the reason behind that. It's not that we're trying to do anything different, we're just trying to be more efficient and more effective with the resources across the board. There are other cuts that also have been acted upon in the district just to make sure that we are not spending, not putting things in place that we don't have the funding for from another resource. And my philosophy is to try and make sure that we keep everything stable and close to making sure that the kids are taken care of, like the gifted positions and positions that directly serve the students in the district, not indirect service but direct service. So that's, that's some information just for you two to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have further questions, we can talk about that when we get to Personnel. We'll just wait and if anybody has any questions. Treasurers' comments?
Yeah, also I echo what Dr. Lolly said about the graduation. It was a wonderful three events and it almost feels like it's a little charge of energy going into fiscal year end. It's always nice to see the excitement on all the kids' faces. So congratulations to the class of 2024.
Thank you. And recognitions, I don't believe we have any this evening. Community Engagement Committee?
Just a reminder that May 30th is the community conversation and if you haven't signed up, we're asking you to sign up. It doesn't mean you can't come if you decided at the last minute that you can, but we just like to have a ballpark number so that in case it gets bigger than what we can handle at Plains Incubator, my gosh, I can't even talk, Hub, we can move it to someplace bigger. So that's, that's it. Is that all we have, Doug?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. So then Board meetings and committee dates, again, those are all posted on Board Docs, but just discussion of June 10th, we had a meeting scheduled. Unfortunately, Mr. Zink and the Assistant Treasurer as well will not be able to be there at that meeting. So we discussed with Dr. Lolly whether or not it would be, there's anything pressing that we needed to try to figure out an alternative date. And the thought was that we could probably cancel that meeting and just do the one at the end of June on the 27th. So I just wanted to inform everyone of that and if anybody has any objections, they can speak now, but that was our plan. All right, so that June 10th meeting will be canceled. And with that, we go to the Assistant Superintendent presentation.
I'd like to call up Stacy Maney and Rob Bogelman and they'll each do a presentation for roles and the work that's been done this year with their team members.
Good evening, Board President, School Board members, Treasurers' Inc., and Superintendent Lolly. I'm Stacy Maney and I'll go ahead and go first and then I'll pass it off to Rob. Let's see if my clicker, there we go. So I am the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary and Primary, so grades K through six. That includes 14 buildings that serves 9,413 students. That breaks up into six K-2 buildings, which is 3,886 students, and eight third through sixth grade buildings with 5,527 students being served in those buildings. The academic piece of some of the work I've been working on this year includes supporting the adoption of the National Geographic curriculum for our ESL students. National Geographic is designed for multilingual learners at all levels of language proficiency, from newcomers to long-term language learners. So this supports all students who are ESL in grades K through 12. And so we may have a student in any grade level that is new to the United States and a newcomer to our country, newcomer to our, our school systems, and also very new to learning the English language. That could be a senior in high school, but it could also be a kindergartner. So this program really is impactful and I supported that adoption along with the training that is, has been going on this school year, but will continue into next school year. So part of that adoption, I ensured with National Geographic that we were supported in training staff we are going to onboard for next year because we may be adding teachers, you just never know, the teachers may be moving. And we want to make sure that adoptions are followed through with, with the training and implementation to make sure that they're done with fidelity. And what we're expecting, we're giving our staff the resources they need and the training and support they need to actually implement. So in Lakota schools, we have 1,938 students that are learning English as a second language and at varying levels. Additionally, part of the academic support I've been working on and providing this year is the NWEA MAP training. That included all school-based administrators as well as multiple staff members at each building to ensure that when they went back, they had each other for support to make sure we're implementing and using our MAP data to be most impactful.
we're implementing and using our map data to be most impactful. We give the map assessment three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. And it can be very, make a very big impact on our student, not only growth measure, but also achievement as well. And so training happened from a national trainer to ensure, again, that our staff not only has this as a valuable resource, but they're trained in a high-quality way so that they are comfortable implementing as we move forward. Probably the most primary part of my role this year has been supporting and developing administrators. So I began monthly in-person meetings with the K-6 principals right away this year. We do host, the both of us, we host principal meetings monthly collaboratively, K through 12, and also virtually. But the K-6 principal team had not been meeting just on their own to talk about their specific needs and collaborate specifically about their grade band or grade, grade level. So began those and held those monthly. In those meetings, we reviewed and I helped support and develop our administrators for things like, and there's some examples on here, the negotiated agreement, Ohio State Test blueprints and resources, the Ohio Leadership Advisory Council, our PBIS work, looking at data at each building and knowing what their data looks like, collaborative scheduling, staffing, House Bill 14, which is very important. We've been looking at attendance reports at the building level and starting to have those conversations on how, if we see a need, we can make sure to address it. As well as OTES and using the Ohio ES website and system for teacher evaluations, MAP, again, that was part of their training and ongoing conversations, looking at building data, which you can do by building, you can do it by class, or you can drill down to a specific student. And then the data dives, which encompass all sorts of data pieces to ensure that our building administrators are prepared and ready to move our students forward. One final piece on that is started the second half of the year with our assistant principals in K through six coming together in person to collaborate. And so that is a new project that I will be continuing next year, but that's something I find very valuable to the district because it is not only developing our assistant principals in K-6, but preparing them hopefully for that principal role as well at some point in their future, if that's what they desire. So district support, I have attended, and this is just my interaction with the district and community, I've attended chamber events, our district parent council, obviously Board meetings here with you all, the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at Liberty Center, the Women of Excellence event on a Friday evening, which was great to support district staff member, district leadership team, fanfares, the Veterans Day programs, as well as our phenomenal high school choir band concerts, and the Educator of Excellence surprise is there here recently. I also work and collaborate when it's appropriate and when it aligns to the K-6 needs of buildings with our pupil personnel, curriculum, and special services teams. We work together. I was just having a conversation outside about how I can help support student in need with one of those staff members. So that's, those are great collaborations that I work on. Mr. Green is our ombudsman as well, so he supports all grades in the whole district. So when it's a K-6 need, which those are usually at my grade level with Mr. Green, a parent need, a need to support a family, a concern, and he and I usually, he passes to me or we collaborate, and I'm able to connect with families a lot through those conversations, which I value because that's, that's my chance to really hear directly from those that we serve, how we can better, you know, what we're doing, and also maybe what we're doing really well, because there are a lot of those things as well. And then participation on Board Committees, Finance, Safety Facilities, and Policy Committee throughout this year, which has been a very enjoyable learning experience to be new to Lakota this year, working with you all. And then finally, again, as was mentioned already today, the fantastic graduations that took place just last week, those are really phenomenal and exciting and it's nice to see the fruits of educators' labor, right, come to fruition. Ongoing work that will continue, staffing is something that I work closely with my principals, with the Human Resources Department and the Superintendent regarding staffing, staffing decisions, interview processing, and those things, positive behavior interventions and supports. So I brought in Dr. Terry Scott. He leads, he's actually done work with PBIS internationally, not just within the United States. But brought him and his team into the district and they, the team at Lakota met with them and they ran focus groups, four focus groups here at Lakota to hear directly from our staff. Three focus groups of just teachers by grade band and one focus group of administrators. And he held those focus groups and he collected that data and provided a report to us about the climate and culture of our buildings. And it was direct and honest and transparent. I was not present and we didn't have district-level administration present because we wanted the most honest conversation to come out of that work, because that's the best way that we know our successes and we can, we can grow. So that is work that will be ongoing. We will work towards developing that district-wide on moving forward into next year. It will continue probably for all of time for us to always want to have a positive school climate for our students and our staff. Also, Follett and district inventory, that's something I brought to the district. The media centers or libraries in our schools use the Follett system for inventory of our library books and materials. But what I brought forward is something I've been experienced in my previous positions where Follett will inventory all district-owned materials. Anything that is board-purchased essentially with district funds will be tagged and inventoried and in our system so that we have a full accounting of all things that our district owned and belong in our school buildings. This is great to bring us up to speed with what we currently own, but it's also very important because of our adoptions on the move forward. We're going to be bringing thousands and thousands of dollars of materials into the district and we want to be able to know where those are. And then not only that, but track where they're located. So if, if one of the elementary schools has an extra set of textbooks or an extra set of materials that they're not using, we can quickly look that up. If we have another building that is saying, I need, Stacy, I need another set, we have another class being added this school year, something like that. So we, we now will have one database too for locating our items and being able to distribute as needed. Digitizing the district, so working with some of our teams too and having conversations and sharing my knowledge of what we can do to maybe scan in some of our documents that are still paper, make us more digitized for efficiency and also for just real-time documents being updated that everyone can see and an efficiency and communication that way. And that would include, to you all as Board members as well, potentially. And then finally, a data dashboard. I'm working as part of a team that's going to develop a data dashboard to have on hand at the click of a button, building data for our building administrators, but also an element of that dashboard that will be available to the public so they can see the health of the district as we move forward data-wise. And at this time, I will pass it on to our Secondary Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of share with you a brief overview of the things that I've been working on this year and kind of where we're headed. First of all, one of my, one of my top priorities is academics this past year. I think we've, we've looked at a way to try and find that balance between the push of testing versus the push of learning at your own pace and experiencing education your own way versus not over-testing. I think we're trying in Lakota to find where that balance is for us. You know, having the wobbly chairs for some fun, but also making sure you're able to read while you're in those chairs and striving for that balance. So a couple of things we worked on is building action plans. Building action plans we require of every single building. And that is that they should have a plan of action on what they're going to do in their building and we kind of help drive the two areas that they need to choose from. The two areas that we asked them to pick from, for this past school year is their tier-one instruction, then also make sure they're doing database decision-making. So an example of that would be reviewing your map progress and readiness assessments to identify content-related strengths and weaknesses that they would start implementing. That is, that is Hopewell Juniors, for example. That's part of their building action plan. That's what they're working on throughout the school year. So when they meet as their own building leadership team, that's their goals. They're working on that. And then to try and complement that then is to make sure that our principals are using their Ohio Principal Evaluation System goals, which is OPEZ, you know, wouldn't be education without an acronym. So their OPEZ goals have to match with their BAP, which is their Building Action Plan. It should be the same thing. We don't want them doing goals for their Building Action Plan and separate goals for their principal evaluation. It's one column of goals. And so they're working with their building to go over those goals. And so their two goals for OPEZ was achievement growth pace based in tier-one instruction and their second one was data collection and implementation, to make sure they are using the data, they're not going on feelings. This is what the data's telling us when we're making those decisions. The goals mirror that. It's not, it's not the multiple silos, it's one silo. And just so people know, OPEZ is a state-required evaluation system we have to use. We don't get to choose how we want to evaluate our principals, we have to use the OPEZ system so that everyone understands that. And then that gets uploaded into OES, another acronym, which is the Ohio Evaluation System. So your OPEZ performance goes into the OES. Then also that's where we put our teachers' performance as well. So the OTES, Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, goes into OES. So it's just acronym after acronym. One thing that I've done to try and make sure that we do that is I have monthly meetings with our Assistant Directors of Instruction, that would be Justin Wilson and Justin Frost. Justin Wilson oversees our West Side secondary schools and Justin Frost oversees our East Side secondary schools. I meet with them each month before I head out into the building to say, okay, what are the key dates and events coming up as far as meeting these goals? What's happening? Well, we have, we have Ohio State Practice Test coming up. Okay, what are some key things we need to be pushing our buildings to make sure they're doing? Well, they also have benchmark meetings coming up, okay? I'll make sure I ask how their benchmark meetings are going. I'll ask questions such as, some of the questions are, what are your plans for the upcoming benchmark meetings and what are your key areas of focus after reviewing your value-added data that came out in the fall? And so it's this, it's this repetitive, trying to keep them in the same line of thinking so we're not shooting off in different directions, but we're doing the same things. And so each month, I meet with each building principal, I go to, go to their building, sit in their office, hear directly from their list of questions. Here's what I'm going to ask about, this is what I want to know about. It all goes back to the Building Action Plan, all goes back to their OPEZ goals, to make sure we're doing the same things that we say we want to do to kind of help ensure that we're hitting that academic piece that we're focusing on. Another key part that I focus on is safety and security. I think back to 2012 when I sat in the office that now Chris Passarge has and I had multiple phone calls in the middle of December after the Sandy Hook took place. Several voice messages, what is Lakota doing about this? How can you assure our school is safe? That was also in the time when we were looking at doing a levy. And so we were fortunate enough to tie into our levy that we were going to do a safety component. And I remember driving over to Hanover Street, meeting with Sheriff Jones, Major Kraft, and Deputy Chief Dwyer, and said, okay, what makes us safe? And they shared 10 SROs. You need an SRO in every other building. And so through the commitment from our community that we were able to have 10 SROs that were added after that levy, and to this date, we're at 20. And so we, we have continued to work on making sure with our Westchester Police Department and our Butler County Sheriff's Office that we are staffing our SROs and looking at ways to keep our students safe in the buildings. I work with Chris Passarge with this, we meet with both sides of town. We also started holding administrative safety meetings. That is where we have a representative from each of our building bands, an ECS principal, a 3-6 principal, junior high principal, high school principal, also meeting with our, both sides of town, law enforcement, talking about, okay, what are some things that are going well? What are some things we need to start doing? What are some trainings that we need to start incorporating? How are we doing on communication with expectations of what our SRO should do or should not be doing? Sometimes we, they tend to get used as an assistant principal and they shouldn't be. We need to make sure that we're, we're keeping that there. And then we talk about, so what are some required trainings we have to do? I think back to 2012, the required trainings were minimum. And now I think about all the trainings that we have to do. Back then, it was do your tornado drills, do your fire drills, and maybe do a safety drill if you want. And now the requirements are beyond that of, of doing, we do ALICE training now. The new one is C-STAG, another acronym, which is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. Each building has to have a safety team now. The district has to have a safety team that will review and make sure that we are putting in best practices, keep our kids safe. And then we also look at what are some optional trainings? What are some things we want to do that maybe aren't required? So we look at what Hamilton County Educational Service Center may be offering? What is Butler County Educational Service Center offering? And one thing that we started to do is started to carve out some grant dollars to send every single one of our building reps to the Ohio School Safety Conference at the end of July that we're able to fund that through grant dollars to send one building admin from each building to attend that Ohio Safety Conference. I also talk about our safety notifications. How do we keep in our community up to date? How are we keeping our principals up to date? How are we notifying those through, most of the time, we're using our Raptor system. And so a lot of us in the district will get a notification on the Raptor system if there is a drill in place or if there's an alert that comes across. We also have been working on code of conduct review, do a lot of this with legal. As I think of our code of conduct, I go back to when I started in 2012, there was no such thing as vaping. There was no such thing as a safety security violation. Those are things that we continue to look at every year, make sure that we're keeping up and being relevant and matching our code of conduct with what we expect from our students, but also what our legal advisors are telling us and as society changes and as we try to adapt and adjust and make sure we have appropriate rules in place. And then also to make sure that our protocols and our processes align with those state and federal requirements as it deals with safety, to make sure we're not missing anything that is required of us. Next thing I work on is everybody's favorite, the always entertaining Board policy that draws a big crowd the first Friday of every month up to central office to sit in on the policy meetings. But sometimes I think there's like a false understanding of my work associated with policy. I don't write or create Board policy. I've just been doing it for a long time so I can help get those answers. I hope people don't understand that I didn't come up with what makes an excused or unexcused absence. I just try and help make sure that our buildings understand that we're following those policies and administrative guidelines the right way. I learned early on that in this job, that if you're not following your policies and guidelines, you're setting yourself up for trouble. And so when teachers would say, well, I have a grading policy, and I would say, no, you don't. We have a Board policy on grading. You may have a grading practice and that practice should align with our guidelines and should align with our policy. And anything that does not align with those should not be done. If you have some freedoms to do some things, that's fine, but if you're doing something that contradicts our policy or our guidelines, we should not be doing that. So I take it upon myself to make sure that I help our buildings interpret and make sure we are following those guidelines and those policies correctly so that we don't contradict ourselves. Some ways we do that is I help our Welcome Center with open enrollments and alternative school choice. I don't oversee the Welcome Center, but I've, I've just taken on this when we started this back in 2014 to make sure that we're following our policy correctly, we're following our guidelines correctly, and then we also keep our ratios in our buildings correctly. So I don't sit and determine whether a student can be open enrolled, I just try and help make sure we're following the right process. And if we start to get above our ranges, then we may not want to put that student in a certain building, we may look at other options. Same thing with the alternative school choice, we have about 600 to 700 students that are not attending their school of attendance zone. They are our residents, they just choose not to go to their attendance zone. They may be a Freedom student that wishes to go to Endeavor. And so with that, you have to make sure you do not create an imbalance in your enrollment or in your class sizes. We don't want 28 in a class over here and 14 over here. So work with them to make sure we, I approve those to make sure we keep that balance, also kind of take the principle out of that so they're not on, on the hook for that and people will ask me questions and not them, just following the policy. I'm also the Title IX Compliance Officer along with Andrea Longworth. That is a requirement from the state. And as I mentioned, the first Friday every month, we have our Board Policy Meetings. A lot of that is through Neola, who is our representative, Norm Burkhardt. We have two major updates every year that we have to process through. I work with him to bring that forward for you all to make the decisions and then work on the administrative guideline parts for people to understand policy is king, it's the top. The administrative guideline tells how on a day-to-day basis we're going to support that policy language. And so that's where the administrative work comes in to support those policy. Also make sure that we have forms available through our website, update those when needed when policy changes. Sometimes you might need to update form, not every time, but just making sure we do that. And then also just making sure I contact legal whenever questions come up. As we know, it seems like we have a lot of gray areas that seem to come up and we're not sure what direction to go. So make sure that we're following through on that. As I work with athletics, try to be a resource to our ADs, support any issues that arise. It's typically around policy and protocols again. Most recently, I shared with you the update to the Athletic Handbook, keeping up with the changes once again, as things have changed over the year, making sure we're keeping up with those things and making sure our families understand the expectations of them heading into their seasons ahead. So those will be going out this, for this summer. Every year- Every year also as part of Title IX, as a compliance officer, I'm required to review our participation numbers to make sure we have balance amongst those and so that we have equal number of sports opportunities for males and females and that our numbers are not imbalanced in those who wish to participate in that as for 712. Also working with them on eligibility that deals with timelines to make sure that our grading timelines align with OHSA sporting timelines to make sure that we're also doing our eligibility correctly. And once again, that all ties back into making sure policy and administrative guidelines adhere to those so that we do not contradict ourselves and put ourselves in a situation that we have to try and work out of. Another part I do is administrative supervision, regular contact with multiple administrative positions, whether I'm rolling down to HR to talk about where we are with our weekly enrollment report or sitting with Betsy trying to figure out the best way to write a letter for a situation that may have happened at a building. Also working, as I mentioned, the OES. I put all of the administrators in there. And so this summer, new administrators coming in, old administrators going out, have to be removed, have to be added if they don't have the training. Work with my secretary, make sure they get the training required for either OTAS, OPEZ, or counselor training, which are all required by the state, but they have to attend those training, re-require that as part of their job. So we have to pay for that. We have to get them enrolled, get them in that. So we'll be starting that process. As Stacy mentioned, monthly tactical meetings, administrative collaborations. Do a lot of work with our embudsman. Our embudsman is there to kind of handle parent concerns, phone calls, also work through discipline situations. He's also our hearing officer. So if we have an unfortunate situation where a student may be facing expulsion, we talk about scenarios and options for that student that we can look at. We try to never want to expel somebody, but sometimes we have to make that tough decision and we don't take it lightly. So we always have conversation. Couple of key administrative supervision things this past year that I'm kind of proud of is helping Hopewell through the fire situation of trying to offer support, make sure we had contact at the church at which I attend to make things work so that our kids can continue with school. And we did everything we could with the contacts and getting in-site, off-site, getting things moved. Appreciate the teams of Chris Passarge and Todd Wesley that were able to accomplish that as well. Then also recently been working with Lakota Central, trying to help them define what they are to be and how they are to be as we deal with staffing and master schedule. We had a flood back in the fall there, kind of revamping rooms. Appreciate the ability of West freshmen to work with Central to find a way to house those students, continue to move forward. Kate Joseph has been great, but we've been sitting down, developing master schedule for next year, talking about appropriate staffing levels and trying to define what Central should be moving forward. Lot of work, but appreciate the work that they're doing. Teamwork of sharing of staff also with West freshmen to give kids what they need without adding on additional staff that's not necessary. Some district connections with Boys and Girls Club. I met a couple of times this year with Damon at Boys and Girls Club, talking about how we can help each other out, suggesting things where they ask, how can we be a better support for Lakota? But they also want to hold kids to an academic standard too. They just don't want to be a holding pin. And so talk about, well, have you asked kids to show you their MAPS scores? He's like, explain that to me. I said, well, let's go into HAC. Let's see. They can pull down their MAPS scores and you can see as you work with them what your map projection to be. And then you can offer incentives as kids work through their MAPS scores and you can also see their state test scores as a way to kind of complement what they want to do and push kids to succeed academic as well. And then some other district connections, you see me at chamber events. I serve as the LAALMC Administrator for Superintendent's Office. Overseen Technology and Business Operations. I'm Todd Wesley and Chris Passarge's primary evaluator. District Parent Council, you see me there, get to do the calendar, which is, which will be up at the next board meeting. Today's only day 28, so it doesn't come down yet. I've had 190 comments, by the way, on the calendar. And then just helping out at board meetings with handouts, work with Chris Passarge, make sure we have SRO coverage when necessary, give board policy updates, always try and answer questions. But most of all, I think, I think my job can be summed up as the string on the tin cans. I, I take great pride in what I've tried to do here the past couple of years, that if I can't get you the answer right away, I will get you connected to the right person. I will get you to the, I will connect the cans so they can communicate or I will research and I will get the answer to you. I've, I've been here a lot of, lot of years and I can answer a lot of questions, but I believe my primary role is help support everybody in their questions and get them the answers they need to do their job. So I don't know if the board has any questions at this time? For Stacy or Stacy left me? I don't blame her.
She's right behind you. She's over your shoulder.
She's right back here.
All right. Anyone who would like to start?
I just have a couple of quick questions. How often do the two of you and the superintendent meet? Just to make sure that you're all hearing the same thing at the same time or that you're collaborating with each other? Is there a weekly meeting between the three of you? Is it just on a needed basis? Is it a daily check-in? I'm just curious.
It, it's as needed and I think it's just kind of drive-bys. Or if there is something that's going on, Dr. Lally will call us in and, or text us and say, hey, we need to talk about something. We've had a couple of meetings, especially when we take a look at staffing, especially when we were doing that and looking at budget at the end of the year. We had more formal times in which we were sitting down together, but a lot of it is just as, as need arises.
This is a logistical question that may or may not make a difference at this point, but when we talk with the Boys and Girls Club about letting them know MAP and test scores, is that something we have to get permission from the family to share?
Well, what I do is I tell them, they ask their student to pull up their HAC.
Okay.
It's not us. It's ask the student to pull up their HAC. You can see their grades and you can see where they're at. And they, and other things that they're able to do that we've been talking about with Damon is getting permission from the teachers, much like a tutor would, to say, hey, can, can I have access to some of the data that's needed? But it's never done behind the back of a parent or without the student's knowledge.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yep.
That's it. Thank you both very much for telling us what your day is like.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to first of all thank Dr. Lally because I can see that you are, you have in the recent past or since you came on board, from time to time, provide us with a lot of highlights that sometimes we don't have. I, I can speak for myself. I don't usually know everything that goes behind what, what the functions are and how each person is performing. So I want to thank you for that. And I'm going to also ask you, when I ask my question, there's one question I'm going to ask you regarding National Geographic and there's misinformation out there. I want you to give us for the purpose of those at home that might be interested and have also seen the misinformation out there, the difference between National Geographic and whatever the other one is, so that it's clear that it's a misinformation that is out there. Then so my other question, yes, so let me ask my first question, then you can, you can respond to that, which is my other question is continuation of Mrs. Casper's question. How often do you two meet to ensure that? Because what you, what, what she does is you continue with it in the high school. So how often do you guys meet to ensure that there's continuity and there's same information that you are getting that both of you are speaking to something?
I would, I'll let you answer much too, but it's, I would echo kind of what I've already said, similar with Dr. Lally. It's kind of as, as needed. Swing by the office if you have a question, step into each other's office or shoot a text. So it's not, we don't have any formal, like the second Tuesday of every month, we sit down and talk or anything like that. It's, it's as needed as thing arise. If there's anything different you'd want to add?
No, that's exactly correct. And, and often I'm doing things that are K6 only focused and Rob's doing things that are 712 only focused, but when they do overlap is when we connect and, and it's just ongoing. It doesn't necessarily require an invite and a, and a formal meeting to get the work done.
Thank you. Dr. Lally, can you give me a highlight on the difference between National Geographic that she talked about and there's a misinformation out there on something else that the name almost like sound the same?
The, the program that we adopted is from National Geographic Learning. It is a textbook company and they, they use a lot of National Geographic appropriate pictures and things like that. So if it's an animal story and National Geographic has beautiful animal pictures, they'll, they'll be in there. But it is a literacy program for students that are learning to speak English. Now, other students can also use it. It's very high quality literature, mostly nonfiction. It is not National Geographic, the magazine. It is not that at all. It's a, it's National Geographic Learning and is very much like a basal reader that you can purchase for a classroom. It has the, the phonics and the phonemic awareness, the fluency vocabulary and comprehension, and it's built for students who do not speak English or do not speak English well. And they use that as their intervention whenever they're with a T-Saw teacher. They use that as the resource for that learning. And really the only connection to National Geographic photographers would be some of the pictures that are used are from National Geographic photographers. And, and they're beautiful pictures of landscapes, animals, things like that, very, very appropriate for K to 12 students.
Thank you so much.
Can I pop in next because I have a National Geographic question as well?
Sure.
Stacy, what will you use to measure the success of this new program? So we know lots of dollars went into this and we have desperately needed something to really launch our EL learners, especially our newcomers. So what will you use to measure the success of this, this purchase and program?
Sure. So there are formative assessment opportunities within the program, the curriculum itself. So formative being more on a day-to-day or lesson development, but measuring student success, those students are not excluded from taking the MAP assessment, which would show the growth that they're making. And also the OALPA score is, is a big one. And we actually were diving into OALPA data just last week and noticing the scores and once, how many students we have had who have scored out or have been able to maybe move beyond needing ESL services because they're scoring high enough on the state assessment for EL learners. So there's a multitude of things, but particularly OALPA is the one that will drive whether they maintain getting the services from the National Geographic Learning, which I should have also shared, SendGage, you might hear that company as well. That's the learning portion and the curriculum writing portion. But so that's the ultimate driver of deciding who gets the services. Yeah.
And if I can add to that, this year will be kind of like a baseline piece for us and we can see, we can do some individual data analysis on if, if I'm scoring here as an individual, where am I this next year? And, and can we truly say that that's because of the curriculum? That's because of the instruction? That's because of me as the student? And those are pieces that all go into that data. But this year's baseline data will really help us be able to analyze that a little bit more as time goes on to see if the number increases, the number of twos that we receive, the number of threes that we receive in the scoring of the OALPA.
Great. Thank you. And then you had talked a little bit about the EMRG focus group for PBIS and you had mentioned that they had collected some data and some feedback. Would you be willing to share with us maybe the top two or three things that you heard from them on a positive or a growth from a growth standpoint?
Yes, certainly. And if that's something that the board would like to see that documented separately and privately, I can certainly share that as well. But we have, I would think, area of growth that we definitely have as a district is ensuring that we are doing things universally, meaning district-wide. So we have pockets of really great positive school climate, positive PBIS work happening, but it might not be the same in every building. And so that's definitely the first area of growth that I know I have identified that I want to work with the team to move towards is this universal, every building, every child, every family, every staff member is getting us the same positive experience. And so if we can equalize that, that would be a great area for growth. And then certainly some of the positive things that were already shared is that many of our teachers feel empowered to, in their own classrooms. So they feel like they can own the climate of their classroom. They feel positive about being open to learning new or different ways so that all children are enjoying their time at school and getting a positive experience. So that in itself is, is a, is an encouraging point, right? So when you have staff that are open to doing things to continue to make things great for staff and students, that's a positive that came out of that.
And I have one last question for you before you sneak away. Can you talk a little bit about how the data dashboard that you're creating is different from branching minds, which is the current data dashboard?
Yes, I will give it to Dr. Lally, but it is different.
Okay.
The data dashboard that is being worked on right now is a very comprehensive dashboard so that at my fingertips as a superintendent, as a central office administrator, as a building administrator, I have access to attendance data, to discipline data, to academic data, academic data for each and every student in my building, both by individual and by class. So when I have a building leadership team meeting, I can pull up that dashboard and see live data and use that to make decisions about the work that we need to be doing academically or the attendance data may tell us that we need to put some attendance incentives in place or something like that. There's also a public-facing point of this dashboard and that is also live. It is not interactive with the public, but it is a live, public-facing report on the behavior, the academic achievement and any of the attendance data that is shared out. So the public can see at a glance. So if I'm moving into the district, I pull up this data dashboard. I can see the number of students we have enrolled. I can see the demographics of the students. I can also see the attendance and I can see the academic growth of the district, not of individuals, but of the district. So it's a very workable document to track students over time and, and to track the, the district's growth and development over time in certain areas.
Thank you. Is that something we're purchasing or creating?
School Lytics is the platform. And we have a consultant that is working with us to make sure that, he's also working with Todd Wesley and the academic team to make sure that the data that we need to have in there is, is given there. And then he's creating the, the look of the dashboard pages in cooperation with School Lytics as the platform. A lot of schools use Tableau for their platform. You may have heard of that before. We view, we are using School Lytics.
Thank you. And then my last question is for you, Rob. Can you talk a little bit about how our district action plans are connecting to the individual building action plans to assure that those action plans are aligning with the goals we set as a district?
Yes. Yeah. When we look at the district-wide plan, we look at kind of what are our key areas or focus, whether it be achievement, growth, it could be math, it could be ELA. It just depends on where, where it is, where we see it. And then we ask the buildings to adhere kind of that same type of goal mindset. Now their data may be a little different, whereas one may need to be moving their PI from 91 to 93. Another one may be working on their growth in that area. So it's not identical, but it's in the same areas. And maybe it's math or maybe it's, it's, it's their science scores at the high schools or it's working more with their ELL population. But it's based on some of the overall district goals that we need to improve at district-wide and then it's broken down into the building based on their specific data. So they make it more personalized based on what their data show them instead of saying, everybody's picking a 2% increase in PI. It's more of based on where your building is, these are the areas we want you to focus on as far as growth data, focus on these areas. And it could be a, a range of opportunities, but it's in growth areas that we see as a district we need to work on. But we do give them the ability to address it as they see at the building level.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. It's great to see senior level work trickling down into buildings and having direct effects on kids. So I appreciated your presentation.
So I want to say thank you for the, for the overview. I know most of us are very familiar with, with all of the work that you guys do. So appreciate you guys taking us through it. And, and you've whetted my appetite. So you've shared some of the, some of the snippets of insights into the work that you do. I think we have a real opportunity for you to leverage us as a board better, to understand the things that you're working on and share some of that detail. So I know Mrs. French referenced the PBIS. I would love to see that report and understand that assessment. And if, and I would love to see how that translates to the effect on student behavior. I know that's a big issue that we're trying to solve from how we evaluate policy and staffing, understanding that work and, and understanding the progress and where that is and how we can enable that universal approach across the district. I think that's a real opportunity for us. Similarly, I know you mentioned the, the building action plans and the results that you guys are starting to see there. I would love to see some of that updates now before we get to the next report card. I think, you know, we talk how much, we do three map assessments, we do these things. I know that the buildings are looking at this data and making action plans and tracking. And I would anticipate they have a decent idea of where we're headed. I think there's an opportunity to leverage us as a board to give us a sneak peek at that trajectory and where we can intervene along the way, not just wait until the next report card and then try to be reactive to that. So I encourage you guys to think through that as you guys present to us and figure out ways that we can leverage better. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. On the, I know we talked about, Stacy talked about the basically trying to share best practices is how I heard a lot of that and making sure that there's some more consistency, which I am completely supportive of and look forward to that work. But I just want to also make sure that there will be some room for flexibility within each school and autonomy so that everyone doesn't feel right now like, oh, my goodness, we're all going to have to be identical cookie cutters. So I see you shaking your head if you.
Yes, I can speak to that certainly. And certainly, our, our building administrative leadership are all part of, of this work. And, and I know we both support our building leadership in making the decisions they need to make to lead their building. They know what will fit best with their staff or their families. They know their, their needs and their strengths and their areas for growth. So this work presented today is certainly from the lens of district level, but you're absolutely correct. So drilling down, there is autonomy at the building level that we leave in the hands of our building administrators who we trust and are also supporting and trying to grow so that they can make those good decisions for their, for their staff and school family.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then, Rob, I had to laugh when you mentioned fire and flood. And those aren't the first two things that come to mind when I reflect on the year. I'm aware of what a year it's been. Fire and flood are kind of lower in the totem pole of what we reflect on. Safety, you mentioned that. And I know there's been some concerns raised recently. Can you share how you, when there are concerns that arise, how you work with our broader community to address those?
Sure. We, like I said, we have, we have really good contact with our local law enforcement agencies through our SROs, of course. But then we also have yearly meetings with, with both police chiefs. But then when situations arise like what has recently happened, it's, it's not uncommon for us to have calls about what do you think we need to do to review? Things that we look at of, the thing we had out here, we do have a crosswalk out here. We do have flashers out here. Hopefully, some people understand that we don't have the authority to put those things up, that those have to come from the townships, that they have to do those. We don't, we don't get the choice of whether we can or can't. We would love to, but that decision is not up to us. But when we have things like that, we express our concerns, of course, to our township administrators as well of what there may be a need. But then we'll always, always review, okay, so what happened? Was this, was this something of neglect on the district part? Did we not do, do something? Was it the fact that we weren't ready for it? We have those internal conversations as well as external conversations with our SROs. And then they talk with their, with their office, commanding officers as well when we have situations like this, extremely unfortunate. Anytime you have one of those situations, you have one too many. Even when we hear of situations of other school districts having safety concerns and having their issues of never thinking that we've arrived at, at all. It's always an opportunity to figure out how we can be better. Because once you start thinking you arrive, you're setting yourself up. So it's continuing to grow and learn and have conversation and even taking time to research some possible best practices. I know Mr. Sarge has been working hard with some outside vendors about even some newer technology that's coming out to kind of help in the area of safety and security as well. That was kind of the goal of the administrative safety team, to meet with those organizations and see what products they offer and if they would fit into what we try to do here in Lakota or would they give us an additional layer of security that would benefit us without, of course, ruining Adam's five-year forecast today. So we, but we have those conversations to, to see what, what are possibilities.
So, and perhaps we can add a safety meeting that we've had those in executive session in the past. And we can maybe add one of those to a future agenda so that we can get a more thorough update of some of the things that can't be shared here.
Sure.
So any other questions, anyone? Thank you both for your information.
Thank you.
Mr. Zink?
All right. The moment everyone's been waiting for.
Year up.
The five-year forecast. One second, let me get situated here. Okay. So start out as a recap, talk about the five-year forecast and what the purpose of the forecast is. This is a long-range planning tool that we update twice a year. We do this in November, we do it again in May. And that's just to help us kind of have a roadmap of what financial implications we have in the near and further out future. So this is just a one-time snapshot. This is based on the information we have and the information that changed as of when we have it. So our local revenue is all, is still our largest funding source. We just seen the large property tax change. That makes up 69% overall. And the state of Ohio makes up 31% of that. So for the notable assumptions for fiscal year '24 revenues, we, we do have a stable collection forecasted for our real estate. We're collecting about 99%. That leaves for a 1% delinquency. So we're doing really well in that regard. Interest rates have risen for fiscal year '24. They did rise as of December of 2023, but because of how our fiscal years run, this year's the first year that we actually could realize the full impact of that. So once again, I mentioned this back in November, although that has a positive impact on our interest revenues, that also relates to higher mortgage rates and can run the risk of stalling out our locally economy. So it's kind of a balancing act there. If our interest rates go down, then our housing market might go up. So that's something that we'll constantly keep an eye on. Also, state funding. In November, we were just barely on the guarantee, the way that the, the funding formula was catching our student population. Now we are on the formula for '24. Then in the new simulation that came out in April from DEW now, used to be ODE, we are now back to where we were, about $7 million projected on that simulation into the guarantee in fiscal year '25. And if the full phase in was to happen, we would be about just a little under $12 million. So why we want to keep that in mind is because that would result, if the guarantees went away, that would be about 2.33 mils just to stay status quo. So that's not a small chunk of change by any means. The, the levy we all like to talk about in '13 was 3.5 operating. So that's how deep we are in the guarantee in this moment. So also, a new initiative that we did put in for fiscal '24 and we're forecasting that beyond is the indirect cost rates. The indirect cost rates is a way that we can kind of charge back to the other funds that supports the district programming, but they have to be self-supporting. So we were, we were able to do that cafeteria, some of the grants that we can, that we can supplant in, we can do the full or we can do the, there's a lower indirect cost rate for all the other grants. So that's something we pulled in. This year, it generated us about $1.2 million in extra revenues. So right now, that's kind of the, the moral of the story. We're doing everything we can to generate as much as we can on additional revenues, reduce expenditures in any way we can. So challenges to the future operating revenues. In fiscal, in calendar year '26, we'll have the reappraisal. Now, we're assuming class one will be about 15% increase, class two an 8%. So to give you a comparison of what happened back in 2020, class one was 13.33 and class two was 8.55. So we feel like we're trying to be as accurate as we can be with that. And hopefully, this is going to prove to be a bit conservative. However, something we all need to keep in mind as we look at these assumptions is there is Property Tax Reform Committee that's been meeting to, you know, talk about what they could do to change the way current property taxes are being billed and the growth rates. One of the things that we hear a lot about is, is they talked about putting like caps on how much it could grow. One thing that we need to keep in mind for our district is if that was to happen, although for all of us, all of us that are residents of the district, that would be wonderful for us. But for the, for the district, if there was a cap put on that was lower than what we're assuming, then that would be a negative implication for the forecast. So that's something that we'll keep in mind as we move forward. Me, the resident, thinks that would be great. Me, the treasurer, thinks that would be not so great. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. Also, another thing that we've heard a lot about is, is they've talked about reductions of 20 mil floor. The reduction of the 20 mil floor is not going to have an impact on this forecast as presented based on what we're forecasting. The reason for that is, is at a 15%, that would result in about a two, 2 mil reduction, which would take us down class one by, to about 21 mils. So we'd still be above that floor if, and on class two side, we're above 30. So class two's not close. But that's something that we have to keep in mind for future years. But at this time, that wouldn't change this. Now, a cap that would be put in place, that could impact this. So as I mentioned before, $12 million is the guarantee on the state side. So that's a potential risk that we have. Another thing is if the interest rates would continue to increase, then right now, we're showing them kind of stepping down year over year, assuming that the Fed, we keep hearing the Fed's going to increase the rates or decrease rates rather, sorry about that. However, this still hasn't happened yet. So we're monitoring, we're being as, as conservative as we can be, as realistic as we can, we really don't know. So we do, we are showing roughly about a half a percent per fiscal year decrease in that, and we'll continue to adjust as we know more. If you went four years in the past, we were getting about 0.25%. So now we're in the neighborhood of 5.5%. So there's been a big swing over the last few years. So hopefully, things continue to go balanced in, in all different regards there. So also, on the future revenue, we do have a change in fees that we're projecting, and this is for programming. We're also going to look at potentially like facility rentals, other things. But at this point, we've talked about preschool and what we're currently charging to get in kind of a closer range with some of our neighboring school districts as well as still staying under the private placements. So this slide, we've left this in, we'll talk about the mils since, you know, property tax makes up 69 or 59%, whatever it was. Sorry about that. So the way that this is calculated is every home has an appraised value. That, that essentially is similar to what your house would sell for. From there, they take it into a tax assessed value, that's 35% of the appraised value. And then, based on the millage we have, that's what you would be charged against. So that's how your tax bill is generated. This slide shows, this has been updated for tax year '23, the year we're, that we're, they're paying on right now. This shows the large decrease that we had in the update that dropped us roughly about seven mils and overall. So we are sitting on 23.29, I believe it is this year. Let me back up one. I went too quick. Okay. So whenever the property values take, take a large increase, like you can see on the furthest bar to the right, whenever that value takes a large increase, that's where the millage takes a decrease. But when, whenever you hear reference to the 20 mil floor, state law says, or the, we'll go with law. Sorry about that. Constitution, there we go, I'm sorry. The constitution says that schools won't decrease below 20 mils. So that's where, whenever you hear the floor, it just means that operating, if, once it hits 20, that's where it has to stay, even if that value bar continues to increase. Sorry about that. So, so this is, this is a graph of both Liberty and Westchester Townships. This shows where we were. We take this all the way back to where we were right before we passed that levy and where we're at today. So as you can see, we have had a tremendous decrease in our effective millage. And that's mostly because we haven't had to go back for additional operating dollars or any types of levy. This is overall. Now, for the expenditures, expenditures for Lakota is a little bit tricky because we contract out busing. Normally, you would hear people in other schools reference salaries and benefits. Because we contract out the busing, we have such a large chunk, it kind of makes us a little bit different than the normal benchmarks. That's where the busing comes in on the services section. That makes up 94.8% overall. So a lot of times, the benchmark will be somewhere around 85% for salaries and benefits, but because of the transportation being external, we also will bring that in. So as you can see, with us having the PI levy and things of that nature, we can move some of those expenses into those other buckets. And really, the, the general fund is predominantly on service and staffing. Okay, so in '24, the wages in fiscal '24, that reflects the increases that we already had in place for our current bargaining agreements. Healthcare this year, we did see a large increase at 25%. And then we are forecasting 7% for the remaining forecasted years. That has been a very sticky point since we've went to the self-insured that we're going to continue monitoring to see where we're at. Because when we were fully insured, we were seeing much better renewals. So that has been a large increase since then. Also, this year, our, is the final year for our ESAR funds. This, this was the funds, it was stimulus monies, it was given to us by the federal government. This has created a bit of a funding cliff for us. We've shifted the expenses back to the general fund beginning in '24. However, we also did leave some, some of the dollars out to take the student fees, the ESAR funds covering those for one additional year. So that made four years total that the student fees were covered by ESAR dollars. Resulted in just a little over $2.6 million that was not paid by our local residents. So we kind of used those dollars to help support the community as well. Transportation, that's making up 51% for our purchased services. So of that percentage of our total general fund, that's purchased services, 51% of that is for transportation. We're forecasting on the future years, 4% in 25, or 3% in 25 to 28 on that. But we also are assuming a decrease of six routes in fiscal '25. This is with strategic pickups of the freshman riders. So we're hoping that this won't only result in operational savings, but it'll also result in better servicing for our communities by getting, taking a little bit of the pressure off of those routes that we keep losing and, you know, bus drivers and replacements and all. Okay, so challenges to future operating expenditures. This is where we typically spend more time talking because our revenues can be a little bit more, kind of is what it is, where the operational expenditures, that's coming from decisions that we're all making every day. So without the future years of our negotiated agreements, we do not have the future years locked in. So that could potentially result in some risk to the forecast as we see today. So that's something that we'll all want to keep in mind as more information comes available. Fiscal '25, that also reflects an increase to certified staff that was a bit greater than what we had forecasted in November. What we're hoping is, is now we've kind of got the staffing level in a way, that programs are met based on bell schedules, based on some of the new report card with gifted and things like that. So we're hoping that now we kind of have the right numbers and now we can work within those numbers to kind of reallocate as necessary, you know, as future needs come available. As mentioned, the healthcare, we, we have been at a 4.6 average over 10 years. However, we are forecasting a seven. I am hopeful that that is proven conservative as we know in the future. Another thing to keep eyes on is our driver shortages. That's also had an impact over on the supplies line because then our fuels went down. So even though we didn't have all the routes covered, we continue to forecast as if every route gets covered in future years. So we're hopeful that it's not greater than that number because we're doing it at the full. But if we have driver shortages, then that potentially could come down from there as we did see this year. Another big one is going to be the master facility plan with our operational savings. As we begin to go further into the, the years of the forecast, it's very apparent that picking up some economies of scale, picking up some consolidation of services, that's going to result in some operational savings to just produce the same levels of, of programming that we all expect in the community at a, at a more reasonable and hopefully sustainable price point. Another thing, as mentioned, with the ESAR funds. Another thing, as mentioned, with the ESER funds, we're assuming some shifts with the way we're looking at, we've shifted a few of the previous general fund expenditures, we've shifted them into other funds, to get a better grasp on what some of our extracurricular activities are truly costing the district. So we're still going to have the fees coming through, we'll have a recommendation based on, you know, what we would hope that we can all support. However, we want to get all the costs into the right buckets, so that everybody can see in a more transparent way what the cost of doing business really is. Oh, don't go forward. Okay. So, this is a new slide. What does this mean for a pupil today? This is based on, the black bar is our general fund, the red bar is based on our permanent appropriations, if we took all funds in, divided by the number of students. So roughly, an education at Lakota overall would be about $16,355. 70% of that is made up by our general fund. Then this is only looking at the forecasted years, which is general fund only, and that's showing, based on that same number of students, what that would be per pupil as we go out through fiscal year '28. This chart really captures the whole picture, in my opinion. What that's showing is, is it's showing revenue, it's showing expense, it's showing, the green bar is our ending cash balance. As you can see, it's been going up, and it's starting to come down as we get through fiscal '24 through '28. The 150 days cash, that's the yellow line through there. The 150 days cash was kind of that upper end of the policy that spoke to what we would consider to be excess reserve. Then when you have the red bar that's down lower, that's what's speaking to when the superintendent and treasurer have to come up with a plan. So, having this all in one snapshot shows kind of where we're getting to by '28, and then in future years, we'll have to start developing, you know, whether we want to kind of prioritize different things, or whatever that may mean. So we'll keep that always in the front. So, as a summary, I feel like I went a little fast. Anybody have any questions before I get through this? Okay. So, the fair school funding plan, that's still in place. We're assuming that it still goes through. The full implementation would happen in fiscal year '27. We are hoping that it does not remove guarantees. We're hoping that we can continue with at least the fiscal year '21 funding levels. ESER funds, they've helped us offset a lot of expenditures, that's coming back in. We have been planning for that, so we're hopeful that that doesn't have a negative impact on the educational programming of our students. If it does, then we will bring that forward, and we'll figure it out. We also have proposals that have been put in place, like College Credit Plus. We are assuming that that'll go up three times, based on the curriculum department's rollout of additional classes, and really trying to ramp that up a lot. So we've already got some of those built into our forecast. Now, we have excess costs, we have tuition, so as the needs of our students shift, we can also see some of that expense go up, so we're going to continue to monitor. Biggest thing that I want everybody to keep in mind is, is this is only a forecast. This is not the gospel, this is not guarantee of how this is going to be. We believe it's pretty close, but this is, at the end of the day, we're going to monitor the changes, and we're going to keep talking through those as they come available. Oh, another notable, based on the approval that we had a few, or a month back, a few months back, you will see the fiscal stabilization fund, that will take a decrease in fiscal year '25, and that number is tied out to the number as approved by the board. Finally, this slide, we have updated this to align with our financial prospectus that we put out. We have QR codes, and I believe if we did it the right way, you guys can click on the links, and it'll take you to some of those different locations, if you really thought you wanted to see them. But there's so many different ways that people can learn about the finances and the condition that we're in, and get more information. And as always, if they have any feedback, or you guys have any feedback on any ways that we could possibly do better, please bring that forward, because that's what we strive to do every day.
Question?
Who would like to start? Isaac?
I don't have any question right now. A lot has been covered within a short period, and I still have to digest some of this information that you have, so for now, I don't have any questions.
I think I have more comments rather than questions. Well, first, I love that you, or very subconsciously, gave yourself a thumbs up with that last slide from the student. Very well done. I concur with it. I think-
I'm going to thank Betsy for that.
It worked on me, because I'm giving you a thumbs up. What I'll say is, I appreciate what this is, right? This is a snapshot based on our assumptions, and I think what you've done so well is to highlight not just the assumptions, but the level of risk associated with those assumptions, so that way we can be mindful of what we need to watch as we go forward into this. I think, looking at the forecast, I would assume it's not lost on any of us of just how the trajectory is changing a bit from where we've been over the past 10 years, right? As far as excess revenue, being able to put that aside, and I think this is helpful for us to be mindful of all the things that we need to watch. I also appreciate the conservatism that you put into the assumptions, and the explanation behind that conservatism, so we can be mindful in that, and we can actually use this as a guidepost throughout the year, to make decisions, as we're making decisions, on how this is going to balance. So I think this is really, really good work, and I find it helpful as a board member to understand these dynamics. So, thank you.
I think it's, I also, to that, I think it's very important that where we're being conservative, to be able to say why that is, because it's always in the places where we have more unknowns.
Yes, and what I appreciate about it is, it's not a hope and a prayer of, hey, this is how it's going to work out. It is really of, hey, as these things materialize, we know that we're, we've got a little more to work with, or, oh wow, this isn't going our way, and this is going to be more concerning. So, absolutely.
In my fun Excel world, I always say, this is all like if-then statements. If this happens, then that happens, and, you know, it kind of is what it is.
I don't have any questions. I just appreciate the presentation in general, being formatted in a way that our community can understand what you're talking about, and we as board members can understand. And I especially like this last page, and the nerd in me is excited to dig into it. I didn't know that we had connections to all of that within the website, and it looks like some state sites also. So I'm excited to dig into that, and I appreciated your presentation.
Thank you.
Agree. I like this format, and I appreciate how you, how you put it in terms that we can understand, and that you're very good at, even prior to this, I can ask you a question, and you will help me understand, and, you know, give me all the information I need. It was very helpful to me to sit in on the finance committee meeting, to get a little deeper dive into this. I also appreciate that you found so many pictures of kids holding money.
I know, we need to do more of that. But fake money, only fake money.
It's only fake money. So yes, I do appreciate, and I do, I think we all, like Doug said, you know, know where we're headed, and know what things we have to do, and, you know, that we need to keep an eye on this, and make sure that we are putting our resources to do what's best for students. And we're going to have to come, you know, to a point, we may have to make some hard choices, depending on what crazy things might happen at the state, or when the reevaluation of the property in '26 comes around. So, thank you and your team. I know it's, it takes a village, so thank you.
I am confident, when the time comes, to make decisions, that we will make the decisions that we feel are best at the time that we make them.
Right.
At that time, yeah.
Again, we had a deep conversation in the finance meeting, so I got most of my questions out, but for anyone else, the forecast is available online, as well as the 24 pages of assumptions.
The biggest thing is, is the assumptions. Like, if everybody looks at the numbers, but really, we spend a lot of time developing the assumptions out, to try to reduce questions if people have them. 24 pages is a lot.
Right. I guess part of that's the forecast itself, so if I subtract that out, I'll give you 21 pages of assumptions.
And Mr. Oskley put in an interactive index, so you can click on that, and it'll take you to any one of those places that you want, and the table of contents.
Yeah, that's really nice. So, yeah, all the nerds in the room really appreciate this, as well as the fiscal transparency QR code, so thank you for that.
We even, we even found a link to put in for a hyperlink for the House Bill 920. We couldn't find the actual legislation, but we found the, like a breakdown of it. I think it's about 20 pages, but we've tried to put in a lot of hyperlinks whenever we reference things. That way, if somebody did want to take a deeper dive into it, that they have the ability to.
And again, you referenced why it was important that we weren't on the 20 mil floor, and how that causes our rate that we're charging per dollar of value. The rate goes down as the value goes up, so that we are not seeing huge swings in our revenue. And again, I think that often gets lost. It's certainly been my, I don't know, hill that I'm dying on, to make sure that everyone understands that, so that we don't have misinformation, that one of the property, that's why levies act the way they do.
That's correct.
If they went, if our levy revenue went up with the value of property, we would not be having levies in the future.
No, then we would be regulated off by just less, there wouldn't have been ballots, and ballots, and ballots. There's only one type of tax revenue that does not reduce with House Bill 920, and that is the public utility tax, that pays based on the voted millage. So that's a 64.14, that's how many mils we've had voted, general operating at Lakota.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, thank you for everyone's work on that.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the next snapshot in time, in six months from now.
Yep. It'll look much different, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another, that's another thing. I did put it, put in there, but I missed that part, is, you know, as we approach having a new superintendent, there might be some new initiatives, but we'll just work to continue to calibrate, or make sure that everybody understands the importance of things that we're doing.
Great. All right. Anything else? With that, we'll move forward to the second read of board policies. Do I have a motion to approve board policies as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations A through D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I add something?
Please do.
In this section, you're going to see a new, it's going to be established fund 035. I've added the ORC into this as well. This is a, basically a severance account. It would carve this out of the, it would carve it out of the general fund, but we're actually going to do this a little bit different. This is when employees, this is per board policy, or per negotiated agreements. We will actually be able to take this and apply a deduction to all of our staff, that it will work very similar to our workers' compensation, so that it's equalized number, and then from each payroll, that will fund into that account. That will allow us to tap into all of those accounts. It's kind of a way of having everybody pay their fair share, essentially. So, that's the reason we're setting up this 035 for this year. We initially talked about doing it as a transfer, which is why a lot of schools will do that, and then we had a idea, and the idea turned into a question that we found out that we could do. So, we're going to take it back into the general fund in fiscal '25, but it'll be based around that percentage, that we'll constantly calibrate, just like we do with our workers' compensation. So, that's the, that's the need for the 035 fund, and we'll begin reporting that to you guys, just like we do the other ones.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have, I'm going to do the superintendent recommendation of personnel separately. Do I have a motion to approve item 9A personnel?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. All right. Discussion?
Did you say you were going to separate?
I just, personnel, separate from, just doing A before I do B through F.
Okay. I thought we were.
Yeah. Yeah. Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Do we have a motion in second?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that. I first-
I'm sorry, my mother.
Down over here. Mr. Horton?
Are we voting now?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have superintendent's recommendations B through F. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
A little highlight on B.
Dr. Lally?
The agreement for, that you're voting on for School Smiles Oral Health Program, this is an organization that will be providing service to students that don't have a regular dentist, different things with oral hygiene, fillings, things like that, that they may not be able to go to a dentist for. There is no cost to the district. It is grant-funded, and the only reason that it's on the agenda is to make sure that everyone knows about it, and to make sure that you approve that relationship with the School Smiles Oral Health Program. There's also some educational pieces to that, that they'll, that they'll work through with the children, with the students that they serve, but there are a variety of dental things that they offer for students that may or may not have a dentist.
Who's funding it? Is it the charity?
A grant. She said a grant. It's a grant. Not a grant, not a grant, that we have secured, a grant that they have secured.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion? There's the K6, do you want to speak about how you pulled together the K6 specials?
Yes. The K6 courses of study for music, for physical education, for SEL, for technology, and for STEAM are on here to be approved by you. The art course of study is not quite ready, but it will be soon. They're going to do some more, summer work with that, so it will be ready for August. So, we have achieved the goal of getting those courses of study, based upon state standards, aligned, and all the music teachers, art teachers, SEL teachers, everyone worked on the seventh. So I'd like to thank them for the hard work, along with the curriculum team, and other administrators, like Wayetta Hayden, and Stacy Maney, Krista Heidenreich, those administrators that helped facilitate these teams of curriculum writers, I'd like to thank them as well. So these will be ready to go at the beginning of school, and they'll be, the teachers have already seen them, so they're in their hands, because they helped work on them. So we're excited about that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
May I add one more thing about the MAP five-year? It provides us a cost savings to do a five-year, and MAP is something that we've been doing as one of our assessments, and it's a great predictor for the actual Ohio State test, which I am actually getting ready to share preliminary data with you, and this week's update, but, that we just received over the weekend. So I'll be sharing that with you, so you can kind of take a look at what the report card might look like. It's still preliminary, and MAP helps us predict that as well. So I'm waiting on those results also to be tallied and given to us in a report, but this saves us quite a, quite a lot of money. Mr. Zink, you want to describe how much money that is?
Yeah, normally, we would do one-year, one-year deals with things like this, and we've challenged the team with looking into what multi-year deals would actually produce, and whenever they seem like they'll produce some results, then we've been taking those. Over the five-year period, this on the face would look like it's saving about $256,000. However, I actually factored in lost interest, because this is a payment upfront, and by doing that, it takes that down to about $215,000. So in my opinion, it is definitely worth taking the savings on something that we do, we're going to be doing, and down the road, we will as well. So, thanks to Lori Brown and the curriculum team for humoring us on that one.
Yeah, anytime we can take advantage of those savings. All right.
I'll just make a comment. I appreciate both of those approaches. One, I think there's opportunity to do more of that, to look at the longer-term savings, which, which I appreciate. As far as the curriculum for the K through 6, I'm really excited that this is coming to fruition. I know that a lot of work went into it. Just from a logistics standpoint, if art's not finalized in the document that we have attached, there is the preliminary in there, maybe we should separate that out, so there's no confusion that we're separating, that we're approving the art, if that's going to come to us later, or-
You can do that, or they can bring, bring to you a separate one, whenever it's totally finished.
Okay.
What you would be approving tonight- What you would be approving tonight would be what they would be able to start with if they don't get it totally finished, or they can, you can separate it out, or we can bring you the updated version for you to revote on an updated version.
Okay. I think, is there any concerns with, with any changes that we'd see from this, as far as-
I don't think this, it'll be significant, it's because it's based on the state standards.
Yeah, okay. Then I think that's probably the easiest way, is for us to go and vote on this, and then look for the change to come. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, closing comments. We'll start with Isaac this time.
Okay. I was very excited during the graduations, seeing these kids happy that they are done with school, and some of them are going to the military, some are going to college, some are going to workforce, and you can see the excitement in the air. When I saw them, I remember 41 years ago, I did that. So I was so excited to see that. The other part I want to also add is, as we continue to support Aspen, who is still in the hospital, let's continue to pray and, and continue to show our support, because I can, I can feel that the family appreciate it. So each time I hear any update from them, they emphasize that they, they appreciate support from us. Let's give them that privacy, and as we continue to support them, let's pray for Aspen, and also pray that that never happens again. And whatever we're going to do to prevent that in the future, as a board, we need to do that. We can do that in collaboration with the leadership of the townships, and see what we can do to help. Besides that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Horton?
So, yeah, I want to, I'm sure we'll all be celebrating the, all of the celebrations that's happening in May, right? The graduations, the end of school, all of that, which is phenomenal. I think we've had very sobering reminders this past week as well of several issues. One, I reiterate, you know, I think all of us are heartless about Aspen and his family. What I will say is, it has been very reaffirming to me to see how the Lakota community has come together to support Aspen and his family. And what I'll say is, there's been a lot of discussion around safety around our schools. I know we've addressed some of that earlier today. I know the district has made a statement on it. I get asked a lot of, you know, well, is one, or two, or three in the past couple of years too many? I think one is too many, and I think that's the position of the district. I know we do a lot throughout the year and on an ongoing basis to address student safety. We say it's our number-one priority, and I think it is. I've seen that action reaffirmed. I just want to reiterate that we will continue to do all the work necessary to look at the safety of our schools, and the safety around our schools. And I think this is a real opportunity for us to engage with our partners in the community, including the townships, including the Butler County Engineers Office, to take an evaluation of not just what happened at Lakota East freshmen, but also around all of the things. We look very much at the physical things that we do for security, but there's a lot that we can do to, to look at, including enforcement, including zoning, including future planning. I think there's a way that we would definitely take, try to take this into account in the master facilities plans that we do. So, I just want the community to know that we hear all of the, well, we read all the emails that you've sent, we hear all the messages that you're sent. I appreciate that, and I encourage that. I think we need to hear more of that. The way that you guys are rallying around Aspen is exactly the kind of feedback that we need to hear and continue with. And I will say that additionally, we've heard a lot, obviously, around some of the changes that we're doing in personnel staffing. And what I'll say is, I've read all of those messages, I've heard all of that, and I understand that this change is difficult. What I will say is, as we've had conversations with Dr. Lally, one of the things that we've put for, at the forefront is service to students, and I think it's reflected in the five-year forecast, when you look at the spending per pupil that we're doing, and how we're optimizing against that. I think we will keep an eye on, I plan to keep an eye on this continuity of service to students. And so there's a lot of fear around the change that's being projected in this, as far as ways it could disrupt student learning. I know I will be asking the questions, and I'm sure the rest of the board will as well, as far as how are, is that continuity of student service happening? And we can course correct if we need to. I think this is the beginning of a lot of changes that will be coming over the next couple of years, not that look just like this, but things that look different, and that's directly reflected to the five-year forecast that we looked at tonight. We have some real challenges with the district that we need to take on. And so, what I want to say is, while you may not be getting the answer that you like, or that you are asking for, please keep coming with those questions and those, those requests, and ideas on how to think through differently, because it's something that we are incorporating as we're evaluating these decisions. So, thank you.
All right. There was a lot of exciting things that happened over the last few weeks. I want to take a minute and congratulate our teachers of excellence again, Bethany Dunn, Amy Fugate, and Diane Meyer. Those were a real treat to be a part of. They were very surprised, very excited, and very grateful. So congratulations to those three teachers. Also, the graduations were phenomenal. I mean, they always are. The time, the effort, all of the special touches that go into putting on a graduation ceremony like that, with that number of students and caliber of people coming into the CINTAS Center, never ceases to amaze me. So I want to take a minute and thank our administrators and our PTOs, and all of the parents and community that come together to put those events on, to make them special for our students. I also want to take a minute and recognize what happened at East Freshman last week, and let Aspen and his family know that my prayers and thoughts are with them, and will continue to be with them. And I want to challenge us to open up the door, to talk about these things before they happen. We have to start being proactive about some of these things, instead of reactive. So I want to challenge us as a board to start having some of those conversations ahead of time. With that said, I hope our students have a safe and a relaxing summer. I want to take a minute and just remind our families, there are resources available to them throughout the summer, the summer lunch program, and things taking place in their neighborhood. Some of our tutoring programs are continuing through the summer, so if there are families who are in need over the summer, I want to make sure they know about those resources and can take part of them, part in them.
Thank you. Dr. Lally?
I'd like to also send my thoughts and prayers to Aspen's family. It's been several days that all of us, I know all of us up here, and numerous other people in the community have been praying for him, and sending support through thoughts and through those prayers. So I'd like to also express that. We also celebrated 11 staff members at our Breakfast of Excellence on Friday, and I'd like to congratulate each of them. And our educators of excellence were also there to celebrate with us. So that's a great opportunity for us to recognize those that go above and beyond in the classroom, or in the school building, or in the district each and every day, so I want to congratulate them as well. And again, it's been a very fast, very, very fast school year. I've enjoyed knowing the students that I've been able to meet and watch, and the staff that I've been able to meet and talk with and work with. It's been very enjoyable. And I know I have additional board meetings, but I just wanted to say that while they're still in session, and let them know that it's, it's been my privilege and my honor to serve as your interim superintendent in Lakota. So, thank you for that opportunity, and hopefully, we will finish strong through Friday, and then everyone can have a great, enjoyable summer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zink?
I just wanted to say, I think most people on the board may know this, wanted to say we did have a loss in the Operations Department with Veronica Guyton. She will be greatly missed. She lost a battle with cancer, and she has been a wonderful person and asset, not just to the district, but to myself, the whole time I've been here. She was always a very friendly face, and always a very positive person, so she will greatly be missed as well. Kind of a little sad, sad stuff going on. Also want to thank Mr. Oskley for all of his work, helping me with the five-year forecast, and every time, I swore that we were done touching it, and I would do it again, and then I would have him repull things together, and redo the assumptions, and redo, and redo, and redo. But a lot of work goes into that, and I appreciate all that he does, as well as the rest of the team, to help support that, and try to get it as right as we possibly can. So, thank you.
Okay, so everyone's already said all my stuff, because I'm second to last, but I do, get my thoughts together here, because I didn't know about Veronica. That makes me super sad right now. Even though it's been said, I would like to also add my prayers for Aspen and the family, and agree, I think as a board, we are committed to making sure that our Operations Department, our safety team, meets with township and the county to make sure, like Mrs. French said, that we can take care of these things before they happen, and try to find the best solution for the safety, because we, that is the utmost important to all of us, and you try to think that you possibly have thought of everything, and like I think Mr. Boldeman said, we're never done. We're never finished thinking about safety for our students, so. End of the year, activities are all fun, fun, fun. I love seeing great graduates in the Educator Excellence graduation. Graduation is just so much fun. It's just so much fun to sit up there and to see these students, and to see the diversity of our student population is so impressive to me, and they just, they're such a great group of 1,300-plus kids over three high schools. I had a meeting on Saturday morning at the Lakota Optimist Club, I'm a Lakota Optimist member, and we had our Students of the Year. We have a Student of the Year at the end of each school year. And the Student of the Year from Lakota East said, he was talking about his, how, the impact that Lakota has had on him, some of the things he's learned, some of the challenges. He was not speaking as if everything was perfect, or everything was rosy, but something that he said stuck in my mind, he said, "Students of Lakota don't realize how lucky they are to be in this school district." He said, "I would not have been as successful as I have been if I had been in another school district." And again, we're not perfect, and we know that, and we know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but to hear a student say that, he said, "The opportunities that he has had," he said, "are multiple. Whether or not you choose to take advantage of them, they are out there." And he said, you know, the, the one wish that he would have is to how to figure out how we can get more students engaged, to take advantage of the opportunities that we have. So that was just really nice to hear, and kind of a little stamp on the end of the celebration season, so.
That is it. I can't believe we're at the end of the school year already. It seems like it just started, and it's a blink. So, thank you for all of our educators, and support staff, and administrators, who have put so much work into making this a successful year for all of our students. Again, that work is not done. We know many are going to be working over the summer to continue that work. People think that the day school ends, that the work ends, but that's when the work is just beginning for many people. So we look forward to all the plans that will be made over the summer to start off next year strong. Again, graduation, I also got to participate in Butler Tech's graduation, so between the three, it's amazing to see the difference in personalities, and choices, and just how many options kids have to find their path, and that's so important for our students. But when I look at the multitude of opportunities that they have, I'm, I remain hopeful that most every one of our students, and hopefully 100% of our students, find what speaks to them with all the opportunities. So, here's to a great summer, as everyone finishes their week, and we look forward to closing out the financials with Adam at the next meeting at the end of June.